At this time, I would like to call to order the Monday, December 1st, 2025 meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. At 4:30, we had a work session where we discussed a Moayak convenience site. And at this time, I'm going to ask Pastor Mary Frances McClure from Moayak United Methodist to lead us in an invocation and a pledge allegiance. Please stand.
Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we gather today with grateful hearts for the privilege of serving this community. We thank you for Currituck County, for its natural beauty, its rich heritage, and its people who call this place home. We ask for your blessing upon these commissioners as they undertake the important work before them. Grant them wisdom to see clearly, discernment to choose wisely, and courage to act justly. Help them to listen well to one another, to the citizens they serve, and to your still small voice guiding them towards what is right and good. Bless the staff who support this work, the citizens who participate in these processes, and all who contribute to the flourishing of our county. May the decisions made in this room honor the past, serve the present, and build a future of opportunity, justice, and hope for all who live here. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor McClure, for coming out and sharing that blessing with us tonight. The next item of agenda is election of board chair and vice chair, as we do traditionally every first meeting in December. At this time, I'm going to hand it off to our county manager to handle that for us.
Yes, sir. Thank you. In accordance with North Carolina General Statute 153A-39, at its first regular meeting in December of each odd-numbered year, the board shall select one of its members as chairman for the ensuing year. So at this time, I will take nomination for board chair.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Paul O'Neill as the board chair.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Maybe.
Make a motion to close nominations.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you.
Motion to close nominations.
Yes, close nominations. All right. All right. And all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Okay. Excellent.
Is that official?
Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
With only one nomination, I guess.
Yes, one nomination.
You don't have to move your seat.
Ball's on you, Paul.
Well, I'd like to thank the board. Y'all have been great to work with over the past year. Been gone a long time, and it took me a little while to get back up and running, but had some great advice and great working relationship with everyone on this board, and I truly, truly, truly do appreciate it and consider y'all just like family, along with the staff. So thank you very much. And at this time, we'll... Item three will be election of board vice chair.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Commissioner Selena Jarvis for the vice chair position.
I'll second.
Second.
Third.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other nominations? We need a motion to close nominations.
So moved.
Have a motion to close.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor of Ms. Jarvis being remaining as vice chair?
Aye.
Signify.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. And I'd like to say, Ms. Jarvis, thank you. You've been great to work with and done a wonderful job.
Thank you. I appreciate the board's confidence in me. It's been a great experience working with this board, and I have no reason to believe it won't be great moving forward.
Most of the time, it's real good, right?
Oh, it's great all the time.
Yeah. All right. So next, item four is ethics awareness and conflicts of interest reminder with our county attorney.
Pursuant to GS 153A-44, a commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the board, but may be excused from voting on issues involving the commissioner's own financial interest, official conduct, or on matters on which the commissioner is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234 or 160D-109. In accordance with Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances, it is the duty of every commissioner to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any commissioner have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the Board of Commissioners in this meeting? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict.
Hearing none. We'll move to the next item. Is approval of agenda. We need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any consideration? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is public comment. We ask that you please limit your public comments to matters other than those appearing on this agenda as a quasi-judicial evidentiary hearing. Public comments are limited to three minutes. We have two gentlemen signed up. First is Mr. Jim Wheeler. And I would ask, as you come, to give your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Jim Wheeler, Liverpool, 191 Beachwood Shores Drive, Moayak. What I'd like to talk about tonight is the erosion or not erosion on the beach. I go to the beach a lot. I've lived here for over 40 years, and I'm over there at least once a week, probably, at least in the wintertime, anyway, because I can drive on the southern beach. But Mother Nature controls that beach. I'm totally against bringing in sand. I was over there this morning. There is so much sand on that beach. The beach is wider today than I've seen it since, I don't know when. I mean, it's 100 yard wide in places and really high. It's not like it's low, there's no water on the beach or anything. I just want to bring that up. It's just, I mean, if you build a house on the beach, you're going to have to expect some sooner or later, you're going to, you know, see what happens down in Manio, or down at Manio, but Hatteras down there, you know? So I just want to make that aware. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Next, we have Mr. Warren.
I don't have any.
Okay. I had you signed up. I just didn't know if you wanted to speak. All right, is there anyone else that didn't sign up that wishes to speak? Hearing none. I'm going to close the public comments and move to Agenda Item 1, Legislative Hearing, PB 25-01, Currituck County Text Amendment. Request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 1, General Provisions, Chapter 1, General Provisions, Chapter 4, Use Standards, Chapter 5, Development Standards, Chapter 6, Subdivisions in Infrastructure, Chapter 8, Nonconformities, and Chapter 10, Definitions and Measurement to Ensure Consistency with Recent Revisions to the North Carolina General Statutes. Ms. Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening. This... These are legislative updates, like you said, to bring the ordinance in compliance with some recent state changes. Right here, you can see my PowerPoint is going to look a little bit different. Normally, I have, like, the snipped language here for you. I just have a bulleted list and the languages in your agenda packet with the memo for this particular item. The first change is in Chapter 1, to amend the bona fide farm exemption reference, and this is just the section that exempts bona fide farms from the zoning ordinance. This section also had some definitional criteria, and so we felt like that was more appropriate for the definitions section of the ordinance, so we were going to move that to the definitions section and make changes that are needed based on the state changes. Item 2, the state has made a regulation that the local government can't require a masonry curtain wall on manufactured homes that are located on leased land. Item 3, this is related to a state legislative change that a county may not require a parking space to be larger than 9 by 20. This is just to retain some of the standards related to parking of major recreational equipment and major subdivisions. So instead of calling it a parking space, we're calling it a storage space, which really is what it is. And then, item 4 is to amend the parking space dimensional standards to comply with that, you know, that we're not requiring spaces larger than 9 by 20, which most of the spaces will be 9 by 18, and some will be a little bit larger, depending on if they're parallel or diagonal spaces. Item 5 is to amend the development entry points to reflect compliance with the North Carolina State Fire Code for the required number of access points. Pretty self-explanatory. The state did make a change that no local government can require more entry points than those required by the North Carolina Fire Code. So that brings us consistent there. Item 6, amending the performance guarantee standards. This is reviewed with our county attorney to make sure that that proposed language is consistent with this state definitions, and so that's what that is. Item 7, there's two sections where we talk about manufactured homes. This is another section. So we've added the standard that you do not have to construct a masonry curtain wall if the home's located on leased land. Item 8 is amending the lot coverage rules of measurement, which is really the definition of lot coverage, and it's specific to the state's recent changes to that, which we've already been implementing these changes, but this is just codifying it in our ordinance for everyone to have access to. And Item 9 is amending the definitions, including bona fide farm, impervious surface, and manufactured homes. One of the other pieces of the manufactured home change was that the state does not allow the counties to regulate based on the age of the home, so it has to be dimensional criteria. So those are the changes for the legislative updates. And the planning, ward, and staff do recommend approval because it's consistent with the land use plan, and it brings the ordinance into compliance with the general statutes. And I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Anyone having questions, Ms. Turner?
I have one. Can you go back to the previous slide?
Sure.
Thank you.
This one?
Yeah, that one. Item 9, where it's saying manufactured home, you said, so if somebody purchased, like, a used manufactured home, I know, don't we have in our ordinance where there's, like, a date, a year?
Yeah.
What if they can move it? So is that that year?
It doesn't have to do with the... It doesn't have to do... It has to do with the definitions. So we can't define a manufactured Class A home as prior to, I think it's a '76 date.
It's '70 something.
That's where you see in, on page 16 of your agenda packet, you can see that it says "a manufactured home," and then we're striking through "constructed after July 1, 1976" that meets or exceeds the construction standards promulgated by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. We're just striking through the dates. It really doesn't change the definitions. If you read through the definitions, those criteria are still there, and it doesn't change anything with respect to when you can place a manufactured home on a property.
So one, and my second part of the question, impervious surface. That doesn't... Nothing changed on that, just the same as, like, the manufacturer, as far as in our ordinance?
Impervious surface, there's a strike through of the last section there that says impervious surfaces include but are not limited to non-vegetated roof structures, swimming pools, streets, parking areas, sidewalks, driveways, and any concrete asphalt or compacted gravel surface. We just struck that through, and we're using the lot coverage to measure the intensity of land that's covered by impervious surface. So that's where we actually... How we actually measure lot coverage.
Okay.
It's on page 14.
14, thanks. Any other questions?
I have one. Just hypothetical, is... Would not amending these terms and provisions in accordance with the state statutes render them unenforceable if left alone?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
And we are already required to go by the state rule. It's just codifying it in our ordinance.
Did this kick in today or kick in?
No, some of these changes were over the past probably two years.
They've been... They've been living under them. They're just codifying them now.
I got you.
Right.
All right, I'm going to open the public hearing. I have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this issue? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve PB 25-01, Currituck County Text Amendment because the request is consistent with the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan and the United Unified Development Ordinance, and it brings the ordinance into compliance with the North Carolina General Statutes.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is PB 25-19, Currituck County Text Amendment. Request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 2, to require pre-application conferences and community meetings to be held within one year of application submittal, and to amend authority to file applications based on application type. Ms. Turner.
Thank you again. This is a staff-initiated text amendment for these items, requiring the pre-app conference and the community meetings be held within one year of application submittal. There's currently no required timeframe, and we felt it would be good to have a timeframe so that you would expect an application to come in within a year of a community meeting or pre-application meeting with staff. And some of these changes are a result of us working on our new intergov software, which will be a different portal for citizens to apply for permits and hopefully be a lot more user-friendly for the citizens as well as for staff. And so we'll have, at that point, you'll apply for pre-apps through that portal so everybody can see a pre-app's been requested, and community meetings as well can be entered into the portal. But that leads us to Item 3 here, which is amending the authority to file. So when you... A strict reading of the ordinance indicates that for pretty much any development application, from a zoning permit to a rezoning, every single owner would have to consent to that application. So if you think about a building permit application that comes in, typically, a zoning permit is associated with that building permit, and it's not really the typical process. So we're trying to line the ordinance up with our typical process and also thinking about this new software and how that's going to be deployed. And so we felt that clarifying this language here for who can submit applications at what time would be appropriate. And so we're suggesting that any development applications that are reviewed and decided by the Board of Adjustment or the Board of Commissioners have to be submitted by any owners or contract purchasers, and it would be all of the owners would have to consent to those applications. But any other development applications that are TRC or staff approval or review could be submitted by the owner, a contract purchaser, or an authorized agent. And so that's what the language here is reflecting. And then, Item 4 is updating the zoning map amendment. You're familiar, I'm sure, with the downzoning amendment that the state did, and basically said that downzoning applications may only be initiated by the property owners. So this is taking that section of our ordinance and making it compliant with that change. And the planning, ward, and staff recommend approval of this request as well because it's consistent with the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan and the ordinance, and it brings the ordinance into compliance with the general statutes that I mentioned.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Turner?
I have a question. Go ahead. Go ahead. And what happens if they do not hold the... What's required, the conferences and community meetings within a year?
To submit?
Yes.
They would have to hold them before they submitted an application that we would deem complete to move through our process.
Okay, because this is saying within one year of application. Would they submit a new application?
So the process goes, for a lot of applications that come to you, it's pre-application conference with staff, where we tell them what parts of the ordinance are going to apply; community meeting, where the applicant actually goes out and holds that required community meeting, get feedback and dialogue with the community. Those things have to happen before the application is submitted to us. So this is saying that those things should happen within a year of that submittal to the county for processing.
Okay. You answered my question. Thank you.
Do you have one, Ms. Payman? Anyone else? All right. With that, I'm going to open the public hearing. I have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone that wishes to speak that did not sign up? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve PB 25-19, Currituck County Text Amendment because the request is consistent with the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, the Unified Development Ordinance, and it brings the ordinance into compliance with North Carolina General Statutes.
Have a motion for approval?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving to new business, ordinance amendment, opioid advisory to serve as recovery court board.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. In October of this year, this board voted to use the opioid settlement funds to fund evidence-based recovery support services, including recovery court programs. And so what this ordinance does is amend the opioid advisory board ordinance to add an additional duty to that board to serve as the recovery court advisory board, and that's the only change.
All right. Anyone have any questions?
No, but I will have a comment. At our last meeting on the 13th of November, this was a suggestion by Judge Trivette, who is leading the, I guess, the momentum to move towards this, to start in January. Everyone on the opioid advisory board is fully committed, and our opioid settlement coordinator, Angie Lotman, has attended trainings already. And with this, we aren't recreating another board, so it won't be redundant, and that's the thinking behind it. So I think it will help us move forward with this wonderful program, and I will move to approve if there are no other comments or objections.
I'll second it. Have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. New business, Item 2 is resolution requesting assistance from the North Carolina General Assembly for shoreline preservation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Preservation of our coastline has been a topic that's been discussed greatly in the last several months, and recently Chairman Woodard of the Dare County Board of Commissioners submitted a letter to leadership at the General Assembly requesting assistance, and this resolution offers support in that request and also requests from you all that funds be appropriated annually to the Beach Nurishment Fund created by the General Assembly in 2018 to assist coastal counties in protecting our shorelines and our state's tourism economy, and also requests that flexibility be offered in the tools available to stabilize our shorelines and safeguard our communities by considering alternative shoreline management measures. This resolution also supports the Coastal Resources Commission's science panel evaluation of potential shoreline stabilization options, including but not limited to hardened structures, and that was a recommendation that came out of the most recent Coastal Resources Commission meeting.
All right. Any questions? I have a couple of comments. The General Assembly set up in 2018 a fund, like they do a lot of times, but then they don't fund it. But they can say, "We passed something." So they go home, say, "We passed a shoreline stabilization fund," and they don't fund it. So what this is, is asking them that they start funding what they set up. The other part of it is, back, I think it was before the early '90s, you could actually have hardened structures offshore. You could have jetties, you could have other things to help with erosion and stabilization and so forth. But one of the things that we're also asking for is not necessarily jetties, but the ability to put hardened structures out beyond the surf line, artificial reefs, things such as that, which will cause the sand to accumulate behind it and build the beaches without having to spend the money, without having to run... Ruin the ecosystem of dredging to put the sand up on the beach. It would just allow Mother Nature to allow the sand to accumulate behind those structures, and it would really mitigate a lot of the rough surf and so forth. So I'm not a scientist. I did stay at a Holiday Inn one night. But I do believe that it just makes sense to be able to do some of these things. So I just want us to make sure that as we talk about this, we are firmly behind this because they've got communities now that are doing a next phase of beach nourishment that they haven't even paid for, the first finished paying for that, and it's just a perpetual hole that communities are being forced to dig themselves into. So I just want the folks at home to understand what we're talking about, and the board to make sure that we fully are on board with this.
The other side of that...
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. The other side of that, other than the monetary, you know, concern, is Dare County's running out of sand.
Right.
That's compatible with their beach, so they're being forced to find sand further out, you know, smaller pockets, this, that, the other, and it's just going to increase the cost of it.
And I would just like to say, for the record, that supporting this resolution to get the General Assembly to back what they already approved and put funding in it is... And I would support that, but I would not support any cost of taxes or burden to our taxpayers for beach nourishment because, you know, again, I'm not going to put that on the taxpayer's burden, but wholly getting the state to do something, since they've already passed it, let's hold their feet to the fire and have them start putting funding in it. But again, this resolution, again, I can support that, but I'm not going to support taxpayers paying for beach nourishment.
Well, that beach strand along our coast sends billions of dollars to Raleigh every year, in tourism dollars, sales tax dollars, inflated property taxes. It just helps the communities, and it helps Raleigh. They need to put their force of funding behind what they say they want to do and not keep throwing it on the local community, so...
I believe the key factor in this resolution is allowing communities to explore different alternatives.
Correct.
And the Coastal Resource Commission met recently, and they were behind this as well, you know, alternative solutions.
Which is scary because they're never for anything.
No, but they were. They're willing to consider it.
Okay.
Ms. Gay, can I ask a question, just for clarity and just for clarity's sake for the folks watching on television and the folks here tonight? This resolution does not commit Currituck County to any specific action right at this moment, correct?
That's correct.
Correct. All right. Any further questions? Hearing none. Can we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
We have a motion for approval? I'll second it. Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Like, sign. Motion carries. Item 3, Library Director Approval of Position and Job Description.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Previously requested that the board consider creating a new position of County Library Director. As we've discussed, Earl, which is the East Albemarle Regional Library, is dissolving on June 30th of 2026, and as of July 1st of 2026, all library services will be the county's responsibility. In the absence of a director due to a vacancy, the recommendation is to go ahead and create the position so that we're able to hire the library director and move forward with the transition.
And it comes with state funding?
So with the library director position, if the library director holds a master's degree, which is, you know, standard practice, then the library director is eligible to earn a public library certification, which means that we are... Our system is eligible for state aid, and the estimate for state aid is just short of $103,000. It also means with having that certification that our library is able to participate in NC Cardinal, which is a catalog system. We currently do not participate in NC Cardinal, and the plan is to transition to NC Cardinal. The turnover... The change is scheduled for June 22nd of 2026. If we do not have a librarian who holds that certification, we are not eligible to participate in NC Cardinal.
How long does that certification take? How long does that certification take to get?
I do not know the answer to that. To get a master's degree?
No, the public library director certification.
Sure, so as long as, as long as an individual holds an MLS and can satisfy the four core competencies, it's essentially submitting their transcript, and it's a seamless process.
Is there a requirement in the job description to have that done in, before July 1st? I mean.
So I've talked directly with the state library system on what that looks like, and as long as they come in with the MLS, let's suppose if they have the media, like a school media specialist, then they just have to acquire those four core competencies, which are above and beyond that. And so we have some flexibility with the state, as long as we can say that they hold that MLS and they're going to get those four core competencies, the state will work with us so that they can earn that certification.
So if somebody is hired with the expectancy to get that certification, and they do not get the certification, then the state does not provide the funding, that 103 or something rate. So then the county would be paying for that salary out of pocket for no state assistance. Is that correct?
We would require that that individual obtain. That's correct, yes. It is in the job description.
Okay.
Yes, under minimum.
We're not going to hire and then expect them to get it. Okay.
And all of that is laid out in the job description.
Okay, yeah.
Can I ask a question too?
Yes, sir.
The, so far is, if they had that certification, I guess the masters in library science or whatever, Commissioner Angel told me, if they have that, is it, I mean, like, 100 counties, because they're, all of them are taking, are they going to give the funding to all 100 counties? I mean, is it guaranteed if they have that the state's going to fund the 103, whatever the number you said?
So that state aid is grant funds that are pass-through funds. So, I mean, we can't say with certainty that we would be eligible for that.
So I was curious if like tier levels, if, not knocking other counties, but if another county is a tier one, you know, and they didn't have the, they would probably get it over us. So how many years would the grant be? Two? Like, I know the opioid was almost 19 years, but that was settlement funds.
Yeah, separate. So I know for next year, the estimate is $103,000.
A one-time shot.
So it's not a guaranteed yearly?
No, I don't think we can say it is guaranteed annually.
But it is a recurring grant.
That's correct.
So the grant's not the only thing that hinges on that. It's also the access to the NC Cardinal system.
Yes.
Which is their cataloging, catalog, like all of that stuff. If we don't have this, then we're on the hook to figure out that aspect of it as well.
That's correct. So we could maintain our current system, but then we would bear the cost of having that system. And then we'd also only be able to share resources within our three branches, which would mean that we would have to add additional resources within our branches to have access to those resources. I believe there are 66 libraries that participate in NC Cardinal, so that would really expand the resources that are available to our patrons.
Yeah, I know with the previous library system we had, we could order a book within, because I've done that before.
Within the four counties, that's correct.
Yeah, and they would get it within a few days or a week from, could come from Plymouth, it could have come from any of the other libraries.
We shared.
Yeah.
Where will this person be? Like, I know we have three libraries, you know, will she, is her office going to, or his office? I said his.
Okay.
Office going to be at the Barco Library or?
The office is at the Barco branch.
Okay. And, you know, I saw in the job description that, you know, a part of it was to identify, request, and administer grants. Do you have any idea how many grants were obtained in the last two years through this position?
Well, we don't have this position currently. The library director position for Earl is currently held by the Pasquotank County Library.
So that wasn't a part of the previous position to get grants?
No, you know, I know within the last year, we have applied for two grants, one of which I don't believe we've heard back from yet, and the other was not successful. But that's certainly something that we always look for.
Okay, any further questions?
No.
Hearing none, have a motion?
I move to approve the library director position and job description.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion?
I want to bring up the pay grade, since we've talked about everything but that. I feel that the grade should be 75, just based on my thought, my, you know, understanding of the roles and responsibilities of that position. So that is my thought on it.
And what is the pay grade 75 again?
So pay grade 75 starts out at $70,552 versus pay grade 80, which is 81,789.
Will you be able to attract the right qualifications for somebody with that pay rate? What's your feelings on that?
You know, I think it's hard to say. I know that when we look at our, the counties that we compare the salaries with, the minimum salary for the position in Pasquotank is approximately $75,000, and the minimum salary for the position in Dare County is 82. I don't believe that Camden has determined their minimum salary for a library director yet.
So you're somewhere in the middle of the two?
Yes.
Pasquotank and Dare.
Grade 80, the minimum, is 81,789. So yes.
You're on the high side then.
Manager, what was the?
Was, excuse, was this in the pay study? This was part of the pay study?
This position was, the grade was recommended by the consultant who completed the salary study, that's correct.
So it's based on the same science that all the other positions were positioned in the pay study?
That's correct.
It's all based on the same science?
Same methodology, yes.
Okay, thank you.
It was in the pay study, it wasn't something we just came up with in consulting with the people?
No, they went back and asked.
They went back and asked because it wasn't, we didn't have the position.
We didn't have the position.
We did have a librarian.
Not the.
This, we were under, we were under a.
Okay, under the Earl, so we weren't funding it.
Now we have to do our own because they're dissolving.
I see, I understand that.
What grade would it be if, how, Commissioner Jarvis, what was the, I know Commissioner Angel said grade 75, I'm looking at the pay scale.
The recommended grade is grade 80.
So it's 82 off the street? Yep.
And the state's going to give us $100,000, is that what the grant is up to? Up to $100,000?
Approximately $103,000.
If we get the grant.
Well, you've got to think about just above the salary, you've got the benefits and anything else that goes with it.
Right, like every other employee.
Yeah, but that's going to be roughly 25% of the base pay.
I get that.
All right. Anything else? We have a motion that's been duly seconded, we've had conversation, anything else?
So, I was going to say, so we're not making any changes to the rate? We're going with the suggested rate of?
That's what the motion is right now.
Yeah, right now, okay.
That's my motion.
That's the motion, and the second is to go with the manager's recommendation. Mr. Angel brought up in conversation, he wanted to do something different, but the motion still stands as it was done. Correct?
Correct.
Correct.
All right.
I just have a, I don't know. I mean, and I know we're supposed to look at the job, not the person, not the man, the manager had that conversation for about 30 minutes about it.
All right, hearing no further conversation, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion, we're going to do a hand raise. Mr. Braithwaite, you vote in favor or opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. McCord?
I was a nay.
Nay. Mr. Angel?
Nay.
I was an aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Motion fails. We'll put this on the next agenda, I guess.
Okay, well, we would like to go ahead and get the position advertised, so if you all.
I think the discussion is the pay. If I'm, that's what I'm hearing, is we need to have some more discussion on if we've agreed that's right, pay scale start this.
Is it possible to make another motion?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the library assistant and the job description at pay grade 75.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Now we'll have more conversation.
What was that pay, what was that rate?
Starting out is $70,552.
So what's the science behind that? I'm just curious. We have a pay study that we paid a lot of money, it's not based on what we think, whose job's important, who our friends have what jobs, it's based on science. And so what's the science behind 75 is my question.
I'll tell you, I'll bring one up. I'm pay grade 79 in my day job, and when we went to the new pay study, I lost incentives as well as a lot of guys, not this board, the previous board, voted on incentives that aren't in my pay anymore. And I didn't vote, I mean, I would have went 77. I do think it's an important position and they have to have a master's degree.
But that's not science, that's not science.
The pay study, I don't have a lot of science in it at all personally.
My thought on it honestly is, is my job is to be fiscally responsible for the taxpayer's dollar, and I think that is too overpriced to pay for.
But what's the science that makes you say that is my question?
If it's at $195,000, would you question it?
Well, that's not what it is. I'm questioning why we are all, we're undermining the pay study for some positions. It's fine for some, but it's not for others. Either the science is good and we keep the pay study, but if you're asking me to pick and choose, and next year we want to fund this pay study, if the science is not good, let's throw the pay study out, start over. That's what I'm saying. Either the science is good or the science is not good. We should not be picking and choosing what we personally think is important without science behind it.
So as a reminder, I never voted for the pay study.
No, but a previous board paid good money for it. That's what, and we did vote to implement that pay study. We voted this summer to implement that pay study. And my point is either the pay study is valid or the pay study is invalid. We should not be picking and choosing based on our opinions what jobs are important and what jobs we perceive should get paid versus should not. We should either follow the science, throw it out, and redo the whole thing.
I don't believe in blindly following anything.
This position was not on the pay study.
It certainly was. Wasn't this in part of the pay study?
They had to reach out to them.
Yeah, it wasn't a part of it.
But it was part of the pay study, correct?
The pay study besides me.
The final result, the science is from the pay study. You said that earlier.
The methodology used for the recommendation is the same methodology that was used for the study.
So it's part of the pay study.
Raise your hand, the commissioners up here, raise your hand of the commissioners up here. Who's seen the pay study besides myself? Anybody?
I think we've all gone through it.
You've seen every page. I have.
I saw the recommendations.
Yeah, I mean, and like I said, I would have went grade 77, Tony said 75. I would have, I mean, it is, to have a master's degree is not something easy, and hopefully the grant fund that I would have, I mean, I just have an issue, and like I said, it's the airport directors, and I'm not picking the, me and the manager.
We should have a work session on this and just give authorization to get the, get this published, and then let's have a work session.
Right now we have a motion.
Well, we have a motion and a second.
Oh, we do?
And we're in discussion.
With the 70 for 75.
Yes, sir.
But I mean, can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman? Does that just get it, where we can advertise it, and it, I mean, it could go up 5,000 or what, you know, I'm just.
If we, well, we do have to, we have to assign a pay grade to.
We have to assign a pay when you advertise.
I understand that.
So that's what the pay is when you advertise it? If Mr. Angel's motion carries, that's what the pay is, and that will be what's advertised.
Do we have any basis for Dare's minimum? What Dare's?
Dare's is 80.
Eighty-two.
Dare's was 82.
Eighty-two, yeah, I'm sorry.
Do we have any, we have any understanding, any basis on how Dare arrived at that?
I do not. I know that they participate in similar salary studies.
Every county does pay studies.
Yeah.
And when they come back, some counties don't implement them at all, they get people jacked up, they're going to get a pay, and then they don't get it. Then some counties do implement them, and then within, you know, 10 years, you're behind again, you have to do it again. But you go out and you hire a consultant who uses a methodology comparing other places similar to us with like jobs to come back to recommend what the, what the pay is. With us, with the cost of living in Currituck, your pay scale is typically a little higher than maybe it is in Hyde County or Terrell County or whatever. So it's always going to be open for debate and interpretation, and that's what this is tonight.
It is a fuzzy science.
The only thing, the only thing that would concern me about deviating from what's been proposed is, if we're looking at Dare County over there, and I think we're probably, it sounds like we're looking at probably a pretty small pool of qualified applicants for this to begin with, are there any concerns that if we go too low, that we're not going to be able to compete with Dare or compete with, you know, similar jobs maybe in Virginia? Are there any concerns there?
Yeah, it's.
I made to Commissioner Angel, I said like pay grade 77, 75. I will say this, and I'm not knocking any other county, if anybody's watching this or whatever, our insurance and our benefits package destroys the two counties.
Yeah.
No offense to them, not knocking them, but our benefit package destroys our neighboring counties. So, and that's, and that's why.
But that's stuff that's not taken into account in the pay study.
And in regards to, would we find someone to fill the position? We probably have eight or 10 right now in Currituck that work for the schools, because they're all required to have a master's degree as well. And when they see the difference in pay, I'm guessing they're, you know, depending on their years of experience, but, you know, they're 10 months with masters, they're probably, I don't, I don't know, Dr. Lutz, would you say 55, 60,000? Media coordinator? Maybe a little more?
I was told low 60s.
Yeah, well, we need to, we need to take a vote. We have a motion, we have a second, we've had discussion, and we're going in a circle. We need to take a vote.
One more thing real quick. I asked Commissioner Angel, would he consider moving it up, bumping it to pay grades, and that gets it to right at 75?
Yeah, I'll go to 77.
Can he amend his motion to that?
He would have to amend his motion, and whoever seconded it would have to agree.
Mr. Chairman, I make a, or I amend my motion to change, or to approve the library director approval or position and job description with a pay grade adjusted to pay grade 75.
77.
Or 77, from 75 to 77.
Which brings it to, you got it in front of you, brings it to 75.
74, or 74, 849.
Okay, we have a motion to amend your motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, to pay grade 77.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the substitute motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Two to five on that one.
Mr. Braithwaite?
Nay.
Nay. Mr. McCord?
I was yes.
Mr. Angel?
I'm a yes.
I was a no.
I'm a no.
No.
Yes.
So it fails three to four. Can I suggest that we have this as a work session at our next meeting in January? Okay, everybody good with that?
Well, I know they want to advertise, so certainly we do need to make a decision.
Well, if the board can't make a decision, they can't advertise, so we're going to have to, we're going to have to kick this can down the road. All right, we're going to move on to item four, consideration of approval of request to extend leave of absence for Commissioner Owen Etheridge.
So moved.
No, I've got a motion here.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, we've got a written motion.
I move to extend Commissioner Owen Etheridge's leave of absence due to his ongoing health issues and approve Commissioner Troy Braithwaite to continue to serve as temporary commissioner for District Five in his absence until March 1st, 2026 pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 128-40.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item five is a board appointment. When Commissioner Etheridge went out, I was the alternate for the Almaral Commission. I served on that board many years ago, and so now I will be the, if y'all approve, I'll be the appointment, and Commissioner Braithwaite will be the alternate if I can't make it. So we would need a motion for that. And the reason we're doing that is the Almaral Commission specifically asked for that.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda?
Move for approval.
I have a motion for approval.
Second.
Second. Any, uh, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Commissioners report. Ms. Rose, you wanna start us?
Well, I visited the Senior Citizen Center today to help with Meals on Wheels. Thank you again, Ms. Jarvis, for introducing me to volunteering with that program. And if, if you haven't been to the Senior Citizen Center, there's so much positive going on there. It's a pleasant place to be. There are seniors who are doing all sorts of things. Today was bingo, and, and if you know someone that would benefit from a meal brought to them five days a week, they can sign up there as well. Right now at that site, they are collecting food and hygiene items to give to senior citizens in Currituck County over the holidays. So if you'd like to contribute in that aspect, please do. Thank you.
Mr. Payman?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just a couple of things. Just remember your volunteer fire departments, all your fire departments, the volunteers. I mean, we had a certificate fire structure at the south end of the county, um, and we just need to make sure we support. And, and if you have an inclination to, to join, help any way you can, the volunteer fire departments would love to, uh, to love you, uh, to come out and help them with, you know, but you can hand out waters, direct traffic. There's a lot of things you can do. You don't have to actually manhandle a hose and, and spray it on a fire, so. Uh, or just go by and thank them, and they'd, they'd love to hear from you. So remember firefighters, first responders, law enforcement. I mean, the holidays are here, you know, fire season's increasing. It's just, I mean, they're gonna be running crazy out there and it's getting cold. Um, secondly, don't forget our food banks. Um, we have a lot of them throughout the county. Um, there's still people in need. We need to make sure, you know, our, our, our neighbors, uh, are taken care of, people that need to help. Uh, I know Rose Grandi down in Poplar Branch Road there is still, um, packing that little building alongside the road heavily. And, um, she's doing everything she can. She gets a lot of support. I mean, she has eggs in there, she has everything in there for you. But, um, the churches, you know, uh, but those are, they're out there, you can find them. Uh, just don't forget them. If you can lend, you know, just a couple of cans or something, or even volunteer to help, they would appreciate that out there. And lastly, I, I'm not sure if we're gonna have a meeting or not, but if we don't, I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and the board, you know, Happy New Year, Merry Christmas. Um, it's been fun working, um, this year. Again, I don't know if we're gonna have another one or not, depending on how this meeting went or not, but, um, anyways, I enjoyed this past year with everybody there. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Ms. Jarvis?
Um, I'm, I wanna commend the staff on their virtual food drive. I hope, uh, the county manager will give us an update about that and the success. And, uh, I think it's such a great idea to help those in need, uh, and it was a, a really great idea, and the staff has jumped all in. Uh, I also wanna commend the community, uh, for supporting Operation Santa. Uh, this program, uh, that's run through our DSS program, Department of Social Services, is helping, uh, children in Currituck County have a Christmas, and I wanna commend the community for the great support, uh, that that program has garnered this year, uh, so children can have a Christmas. And then I would also like to thank the community, uh, for the Community Thanksgiving that took place down in Jarvisburg, at Jarvisburg Church of Christ. Uh, six hundred meals served there.
Wow.
Uh, and, uh, just the kindness, uh, this community is showing and continues to shows, um, show this season. Uh, and if we aren't meeting our second meeting, I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a wonderful New Year. Thank you.
Well, before we go to Mr. Braithwaite, we are not meeting the second meeting in December. Every one of y'all agreed to that.
I know, well, you were talking about work sessions, so I was getting nervous.
Mr. Chairman, it's December fifteenth. I mean, Christmas is the following week. I just have an issue with us. I mean, we have so much stuff. That's just my two cents.
Well, good. Save it for your comment. Mr. Braithwaite?
Yeah, uh, again, um, as others have said, uh, wanted to take a moment to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a very happy New Year. Um, and, uh, just remind folks to continue to be safe out there. We're in the holiday season and, um, uh, you know, just be safe on the roads and, um, um, just be, um, aware of your surroundings and, um, those sort of things as you're out and about, um, doing what you need to do. Uh, I'm gonna tack on a little bit, um, to what, um, some others have said. Uh, they've given some great, uh, examples and opportunities of ways to, um, to participate, to help, uh, folks in our community. Um, I'm just gonna give one more. Um, wanted to talk about the, uh, the food bank of the Almaral. Um, this, and, uh, earlier in November, uh, November twenty-first and twenty-second, uh, they actually set up shop in Moayak, um, for the Mayflower Marathon Fund and Food Drive. Um, they help a lot of folks in the area, including folks in Currituck County. Um, and as others have mentioned, uh, there are still folks, uh, obviously in need. We are still in the holiday season, um, so I urge you all to, um, either support the food bank of the Almaral or any, any of the other, um, charities that we have available in Currituck County, and, um, just keep your hearts open. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. McCord?
Uh, first off, if my wife is home watching, please take Paul O'Neill off the Christmas card mail-out list. Now, I'm just, I'm just teasing. I have thick skin, so, uh, it'll hurt my feelings, but now I'm just kidding. Um, the Christmas parade, Pray for No Rain, uh, is Friday. I have a ton of, we have a ton of floats. Um, the Christmas assistance program, there's still time to donate. Um, we got some really big donations from some people, um, which is awesome. And the, uh, we shop for the kids next week on Monday and Wednesday, I believe are the days that we shop. So the patrol deputies that go and buy the kids' stuff and their family members can, um, with the shift changes, so they can get the stuff for them. The, um, like I said, there's a lot of kids that don't, um, you know, get the stuff that like, you know, I mean, I mean, there's, we have a lot of spoiled kids and we have a lot of underprivileged kids that, so it's actually a good thing to, um, to donate to that program. The, um, last week, I don't remember what night it was, I believe it was Monday night, so whatever that was. Um, we had our first, and this is something where we've had lots of controversial meetings and people, our first, uh, Fab Board, and it's not the Feab, Fire EMS Advisory Board. I sit on that, but now I sit on the Fab Board, which is the Fire Advisory Board, which is made up of the Fab Five. It's not the basketball team from Michigan, Troy could, um, it's the five fire chiefs at the volunteer stations in Currituck County. Um, great meeting. Uh, the manager was there, I was there, and four of the Fab Five were there. One had something else, but we were there for a very long time. It was about two hours and some change, but there was a lot of positive, you know, checking boxes of some stuff where there was some issue, and, you know, there's ninety-nine percent of it's probably just maybe some communications, which I think everybody's on board. We have some great paid, we have some great volunteers. So it's, it's a lot of good things, and just getting everybody on the same page is a very, very successful meeting. Our next meeting, I don't remember the exact dates in my planner, in December. But, um, that's something that this board has worked on. Um, I've been on that board since Commissioner Beaumont left, and the first couple of meetings were, they were pretty interesting, we'll just say that. Um, but now we had a great meeting, and I think it's gonna be moved positive and very positive for the county. Um, everybody have a Merry Christmas. If we don't, I was told, we're not having that meeting, I could meet by myself, I think is what, uh, Chairman O'Neill told me, and I nominated him too. Gosh, what, no, just, just kidding. Um, but no, like I said, everybody have a Merry Christmas, and like I said, be kind. Um, you know, it's easier to just go along and get along than be, you know, a tail hole, you know? If you wanna bash a business on social media, you know, I mean, that, that accounts to nothing. It's the Christmas season. You don't know what that family's going through, whatever. Just be nice. It's easy to be nice than nasty. So, and some people that like to be nasty, and you know, they're probably on the naughty list, and they're not getting nothing this year. So, um, I think that's everything. But like I said, uh, if it, you're gonna get an email, if you're in the Christmas parade, follow the county website, follow the county social media page. There'll be announcements. We have a great, um, parade lined up. Due to it growing and growing and growing and growing, we went back to the old way of the order. We come, the parade's reversed, and we had to just get more lighting for it, but we had to move it that way, uh, because it's for, just for safety purposes wise. It'll be safer this way. Um, like I said, we have tons of fire trucks, um, police vehicles, great floats. I mean, people put some serious time, so it's free, unless you wanna buy food. Obviously, the food trucks, not free, but the parade's free. Uh, the Christmas lighting is at six. The trees were delivered today. Uh, yeah, don't red light me. I, I've had no Commissioner comment for like the last five, 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 five meetings, but yeah, so.
But you can do some more on the fifteenth when you're here by yourself.
Yeah, I'll be here on the fifteenth. If anybody wants to come, we'll YouTube it.
That's a work session.
Feel free, that's a work session, me and myself and I, so it'll be three of us. But, uh, that's it for me. Like I said, just follow social media in case, positive social media, if the parade gets, um, gets canceled due to the weather, and hopefully Mother Nature's kind, and it doesn't. That's it. Chairman O'Neill.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm gonna still mail you a card.
Okay. Mr. Angel?
As everybody else said, Merry Christmas. Uh, I hope everybody has a fantastic New Year, gets to spend time with the family. Uh, that is, that is one of the important things about this time of the year. Um, I will be spending time with the wrestling team, um, so keep me in your thoughts. Other than that, see you guys, twenty twenty-six.
Real brief, I also attended the Fire Advisory Board as, uh, Mr. McCord left me out because he's not talking to me now.
He was there for thirty minutes.
Yeah. It was, uh, uh, I came to give words of encouragement.
You did a great job.
And, uh, uh, Mr. McCord serves as our representative on that board. Um, the feedback I've gotten from the fire department's been nothing but positive that the, uh, previous meetings sometimes didn't go in a positive manner. They're very appreciative of it. Uh, they're gonna work on several things because for the folks at home out there, you talk about taxes. If our volunteer fire department folds, you are looking at the most outrageous, unheard-of tax increase you've ever heard in your life just to get a minimal level of coverage. So you don't have to be young, you don't have to be in the best of health, but you can volunteer because they need numbers. Even if you wanna serve coffee when they get back from a call, or if you just want to, uh, 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 help clean up or whatever, they need you, we want you to do it, we can't afford to lose our volunteer fire departments. And then lastly, it, um, just so you know, the board decided they did not want to have a second meeting in December. I did not arbitrarily do that, and Mr. McCord agreed to it as well. So, lastly, let's not forget what this season is. This is all about, uh, birth and renewal and, and the birth of our Savior. So Merry Christmas to everybody, and to everybody a good night. So we need a, a motion to adjourn the county commissioners meeting. Well, she didn't have anything, did you? So county managers report. They served us eggnog before we came out here, just.
We just elected him, right?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
I, I do wanna recognize, uh, county employees and community members who contributed to the virtual food drive. Um, it's the first time that we've done this, and we were able to raise over a thousand dollars through, through that, so.
That's great.
Really proud of, of those folks. Um, also want to share that there was a water main break today on Tulsa Creek Road. Um, so potable water service in the area of Dolphin Court, um, in Moayak was interrupted. And once the, the water is restored, there will be a boil water advisory in effect for Dolphin Street, Kobia Street, Bass Street, and Traut, Trout Street.
Ms. Manager? I don't mean to interrupt, but it's still, they're still working on, I just looked, they're still actively working on it too, so it might be a little while longer.
Right. Thank you. And then also, uh, last Wednesday, the North Carolina Department of Commerce released their twenty twenty-six tier designations, and Currituck County was once again ranked as the least distressed state, or county in the state of North Carolina. Um, our, our neighbor Camden County, uh, also moved from a tier two to a tier three. Um, and so we will continue to work with our legislators and, and partners to, uh, continue that conversation and to look at reform or maybe even elimination of the, the tier system.
Yeah, Camden got their money just in time for that new school.
They got their money.
Sixty million dollars. They wouldn't get it now.
Yep.
We got a Christmas card.
County attorney, report?
No report.
All right, at this time, we need a motion to adjourn our meeting as the Currituck County Board of Commissioners and to reconvene as the Tourism Development Authority.
So moved.
You have a motion?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Manager?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are two budget amendments this evening for your approval. The first is a, uh, hourly base pay increase for Ocean Rescue employees. The, the request came in to increase the hourly rate to twenty-one dollars an hour, which will require a contract amendment, but also a budget amendment in the amount of forty thousand dollars in the current fiscal year, and, uh, and a contract increase in the next fiscal year of forty thousand dollars for a total contract increase of eighty thousand dollars.
From occupancy tax.
That's correct.
Okay.
I just would like to say, Mr. Chairman, they put some numbers out. I mean, far as the saves, those guys and girls, both. I mean, like Ocean Rescue with our staff, I mean, we can all day long advertise that.
They're important.
There are beaches that, I mean, they do an excellent job. You can't put a price tag on that.
All right, do you want to be separate or together?
We can do it together. The, the second budget amendment is, uh, additional funds for replacement of the geothermal system at the Whalehead Club. Uh, there was money that was budgeted and the, the bid came in, uh, over and above what was funded in the current year.
And these monies are coming from?
That's occupancy taxes. Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none. Do we have a motion for approval?
I'm moved for approval. Both budget item or budget amendments.
I have a motion for approval.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now we need a motion to adjourn the meeting of the Tourism Development Authority.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are adjourned.
See you on the fifteenth.